Call the meeting to order call the roll.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas. Trustee Milani.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Reardon.
Here.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job by the girls in the front here.
Very good. Very good.
First agenda item is approval of the February 3rd, 2025 Committee of the Whole minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole of February 3rd, 2025.
Suck it. Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Milani.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radiszewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Next, the Orland Park Police Department's biannual awards ceremony, badge pinning, and swearing-in of a newly promoted sergeant and patrol officer.
Get your non-scheduled citizens and visitors first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, any non-scheduled citizens and visitors for agenda-specific public comment? Okay.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. First of all, my name is Vidi Tama, and I've been living in Orland Park for about three or four years now. It's great to see taxpayer dollars going back into re-admission of the local parks in the area. I just wanted to comment on the specific park design for the Eagle Ridge Three subdivision. First of all, it's great to see you guys updating those parks. However, the design, it would have been nice to have some kind of notice beforehand to have some input on the design process, whether it was kind of flyers with the residents in the area or just a notice on the actual park sign itself. Hey, design input leading this state would have been great. It seems like the proposal on the agenda item kind of ignores a few of the derelict horseshoe sandbox that's kind of a little bit 15, 20 feet east of the park, as well, it seems to be shrinking the actual kind of older child per playground significantly to make room for a kind of zip line. So, the current park has a zip line, which is, you know, as someone who's goes to that park with my five-year-old daughter three or four times a week during the spring, summer times, it's not very often used. So, I just kind of questioned including an updated zip line for the park itself. And in addition, I kind of sat in to see the removal of the, again, the older children park, which includes a really big slide, which I was kind of looking forward to my daughter growing into as she gets older. So, I was just hoping some of that input can be still kept, still taken into account. It's not too late as far as the design process is concerned. In addition, there's a lot of unused space in that area, maybe a tennis court or some pickleball courts would be really interesting to see. I know obviously that costs money, but it just kind of seems to be a waste to just have all that unused space in that area and not really have anything for adults in the subdivision. I know there's a half-court basketball on the next subdivision over Mission Hills. So, something similar, again, tennis court or pickleball court would be much appreciated by the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is anyone else here to speak?
Sorry. Now, the Orland Park Police Department's biannual awards ceremony, badge pinning, and swearing-in of a newly promoted sergeant and patrol officer.
Good evening, everybody, and I want to extend a warm welcome to our officers, their families, and our board members. Tonight, we gather for a special occasion, the quarterly awards ceremony, where we recognize and celebrate the hard work and dedication of our officers. Your unwavering commitment to our community does not go unnoticed, and we thank each of you for your service. Well, we have held many of these ceremonies, and we've honored our officers, who do have an amazing job. I realize that I also, in probably the 12 or 14 of these we've done, I've never taken the opportunity to acknowledge those who support and equip you with the tools and leadership necessary for success. Tonight, I want to change that. So, first, I want to thank Trustee Healy, Katsinas, and Milani for standing strong with me in opposition to the Safety Act. Some of you may recall, on January 18th, 2021, we passed a resolution in support of law enforcement, reaffirming our commitment to public safety and opposing efforts that would undermine our officers. So, that resolution stated that we support our law enforcement agencies and their members who serve our communities, disapproving of efforts to delegitimize the law enforcement profession, reducing municipal authority, prioritizing criminals over the safety of law-abiding citizens and police officers, and calling on Governor J.B. Pritzker to veto HB 3653, which he still, they still should eliminate. I also want to recognize the entire board for their continued commitment to our officers. Beyond ensuring that our officers receive the highest pay raises in the village and remain among the highest paid in the Chicago line region, they have provided critical resources, including state-of-the-art tasers, upgraded duty weapons, riot helmets, gas masks, and lighter body armor. They've, we've provided body-worn cameras, riot shields, rifle plates, vest carriers, and new exercise equipment for the department's weight room, unmarked SUVs for detectives, and the establishment of a peer support team. They've also put AEDs and cell phones in every beat car. In addition to equipment, the board has invested in training and facilities, including over 15,000 hours of training in 2024, and an expanded and upgraded evidence room that will be built this year, also a new firing range and training center featuring a state-of-the-art use-of-force simulator, which will be operational sometime in the spring of, spring or early summer of this upcoming year. We've also expanded vital programs. We've increased crank cameras and license plate readers throughout town. We've expanded the drone program and trained more officers in its use. We strengthened the targeted response unit with additional personnel, and we've increased participation in the federal task force operations. Under their leadership, we've also introduced innovative initiatives, including LEO, the Mobile Response Unit, Texta 911, the Youth Supervision Program at Orland Square, FUSIS, secure digital radios for officers, senior living center visits, the Autism Awareness Program, Maverick, who's Illinois' only Hanoverian Hound for specialized tracking, and we're soon to add a bloodhound with a handler this year. We've also approved a crime analyst position to enhance investigative capabilities. The results of these efforts and all of your efforts speak for themselves. Lower index crimes over the last six years than in any of the previous 31 years, the lowest violent crime rates for cities over 50,000 residents in Illinois for at least the past five years, and in 2024, Orland Park ranks second lowest in property crime, among the 360 largest U.S. suburbs, and fifth lowest in violent crime. Orland Square Mall is now the safest mall in Chicagoland, and Orland Square was named the safest city in Illinois in 2020, and the eighth safest small city in the U.S. in 2021. None of this would have been possible without the incredible leadership of Chief Rossi, Deputy Chief Rafferty, and former Chiefs McCarthy and Mitchell, as well as former Deputy Chiefs Mitchell and West. I want to specifically recognize Chief Rossi and former Deputy Chief West, who faced, who recently faced dishonest and fabricated attacks on their careers. Thank you to our village board for standing by them and supporting their integrity and their leadership. To our officers, especially those early in your careers, I encourage you to look to Chief Rossi and Deputy Chief West as role models. Chief Rossi was a lateral hire in his first year as an officer, and Deputy Chief West started as a CSO in Orland Park. Their success is rooted in the dedication, in their dedication, integrity, and accountability. They showed up, did their jobs without complaint, and upheld the highest standards. Follow their example, and you will have a rewarding and honorable career. With unwavering board support, strong leadership from the chief to the sergeants, and the dedication of every officer and staff member, we continue to be the best department in Illinois. As long as I am here, we will continue supporting you and keeping Orland Park safe. We will stay committed to maintaining our standards because they work. Thank you all for your service and dedication. We appreciate everything you do. Thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to the chief.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an honor and privilege to be part of this awards ceremony. We do this twice a year, and tonight, we're going to name Officer Dear and Civility Year, and I want to thank the family and friends that came out tonight to support their loved ones. We're also going to swear in a new sergeant, Mike Freeman, and a new officer. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to the Chairman of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, Dave O'Connor, for swearing in. Thank you, Chief, and good evening to the mayor and the entire village board and all honored guests. I have the honor of representing the Fire and Police Commission here in Orland Park. I've done so for the last 26 years, and I've seen so many great things that this department has done along that period of time. Tonight, we're going to, once again, provide honor where honor is due. We have one of the most extraordinary police departments in this entire state, one of the best, one of the most committed, one of the most professional, and we should be proud every single day because we can rest our head safely at night as they are working hard on our behalf. Tonight, we are going to do what the Fire and Police Commission, one of our primary objectives, is to recruit and to hire and to promote Orland Park Police Officers. And we are going to see that we're going to add to that family a little bit, and we're going to add one of those officers, and we're going to also see another officer move up the ladder. So, we're going to get to see that tonight. With that, may I have Michael Freeman.
Sergeant Mike Freeman began his career with the Orland Park Police Department in July of 2011. Dedicated to serving his community, Mike expanded his role in 2017 by joining the South Suburban Emergency Response Team. His commitment to investigative work led to the appointment to the Investigations Unit in 2022. Furthering his expertise, he became a member of the South Suburban Major Crimes Task Force in 2024. In November of 2024, Mike was promoted to the rank of Sergeant, a testament to his leadership and dedication. He will be pinned by his wife, Kristy.
Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Michael Freeman, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois. I will enforce all laws of the state and ordinances of the Village of Orland Park. I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Police Sergeant for the Orland Park Police Department to the best of my ability. So, help me God. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Sergeant Michael Freeman. If I might have Sebastian Jawolski, please step forward.
Officer Sebastian Jawolski joined the Orland Park Police Department on November 11th, 2024, bringing valuable experience from his time with the Brookfield Zoological Police Department. He is currently assigned to Patrol Division on the afternoon shift, where he continues to serve with dedication and professionalism. He will be pinned by his mother, Margaret.
Please raise your right hand. Aye, Sebastian Jawolski. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois. I will enforce all laws of the state and ordinances of the Village of Orland Park. I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Police Officer for the Orland Park Police Department to the best of my ability. So, help me God. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Officer Jawolski.
Okay, the Grand Cordon, the Grand Cordon Award is awarded to police officers and employees of the department for their dedication and determination in the arrest of persons responsible for numerous criminal acts throughout the area. Grand Cordon is presented to Police Officer Chris Prattle. On October 18th, 2024, Officer Prattle was dispatched to a retail establishment in response to a theft in progress. Upon arrival, he quickly located the suspects and initiated an interview. Through his thorough investigative efforts, Officer Prattle determined that these individuals have committed multiple thefts from various local retail businesses. Further examination revealed that the suspects were also in possession of stolen property from a neighboring town. During the course of his interview, Officer Prattle uncovered that the suspects had been stealing merchandise with the intent to resell it for financial gain. As a result of his diligent investigation, Officer Prattle successfully resolved multiple retail theft cases in Orland Park and other jurisdictions. His exceptional police work led to both suspects being charged with continuing a financial criminal enterprise, along with additional felony offenses. Officer Prattle's dedication, keen investigative skills, and commitment to justice exemplify the highest standards of law enforcement. In recognition of his outstanding efforts, he is hereby awarded the department's Grand Cordon Award. Exceptional Service. The Exceptional Service Award is presented to the officers and employees of the department for a highly credible accomplishment, bringing public acclaim to themselves, the department, or to the police profession as a result of training, devotion to duty, or service to the public. So, one is being presented to Sergeant Michael Freeman, Sergeant Casey Wall, Sergeant Doug Kine, Investigator Hank Schoenfeld, Investigator John Folyard, and Investigator Alex Vayner. On March 20th, 2024, the Orland Park Police Department responded to the 1700 block of Pond Willow Drive for report of gunfire in the area. Upon arrival, officers discovered a vehicle riddled with multiple bullet holes and a lone female occupant who had tragically succumbed to her injuries. In the months that followed, Sergeants Freeman, Wall, and Kine, along with Investigators Vayner, Folyard, and Schoenfeld, dedicated countless hours to this complex homicide investigation. Through relentless determination and the meticulous analysis of a vast amount of technological data, they successfully identified multiple suspects and determined each individual's role in the crime. Their wavering efforts led to the issuance of an arrest warrant for first-degree murder for one of the suspects. On August 15th, 2024, Orland Park Police Department investigators, in collaboration with the FBI Criminal Apprehension Team in Las Vegas, Nevada, successfully apprehended the primary suspect and extradited him back to Illinois. Additionally, two other suspects with varying levels of involvement were also charged, further ensuring justice for the family and for the victim and her family. Sergeants Freeman, Wall, and Kine, along with Investigators Vayner, Folyard, and Schoenfeld, exemplify the highest standards of investigative excellence, dedication, and teamwork. Their extraordinary efforts not only brought justice to a tragic case, but also brought great credit to themselves and the Orland Park Police Department. In recognition for their exceptional service and commitment to justice, Sergeants Freeman, Wall, Kine, Investigators Vayner, Folyard, and Schoenfeld are hereby awarded the Exceptional Service Award. Exceptional Service Award presented to Investigator Folyard and Investigator Alex Vayner. On June 6th, 2024, the Orland Park Police Department responded to a vehicular hijacking that had just occurred in a local car dealership. Officers learned that two masked male suspects approached a car porter as he was loading a vehicle onto a trailer. One of the suspects displayed a handgun before forcibly taking the vehicle's keys. The suspects then fled the scene in two separate vehicles. Investigators Folyard and Vayner immediately responded and began tracking the stolen vehicle. Their efforts led them to an alley in South Holland, where they successfully located the stolen vehicle. The vehicle was towed back to the Orland Park Police Department, where it was processed for forensic evidence. During the examination, Investigator Folyard successfully lifted a fingerprint from inside the stolen vehicle, which possibly identified one of the suspects. As the investigation progressed, Investigators Folyard and Vayner uncovered a similar vehicular hijacking that had recently taken place at a car dealership in Countryside. The suspects in that incident matched the description of the Orland Park offenders. Through their diligent efforts, they authored and executed search warrants, obtaining crucial evidence that placed both suspects at the scenes of both crimes. With this compelling evidence, Orland Park and Countryside Investigators took both suspects into custody without incident. Investigators also recovered handguns and clothing believed to have been used in both crimes. As a result of their exceptional police work, the suspects were formally charged with vehicular hijacking and aggravated unlawful use of a handgun. Investigators Folyard and Vayner exemplify the highest standards of law enforcement through their dedication, investigative expertise, and unwavering commitment to justice. Their efforts not only led to the swift apprehension of dangerous offenders, but also brought great credit to themselves in the Orland Park Police Department. In recognition of their outstanding service, Investigators Folyard and Vayner are hereby awarded the Exceptional Service Award. Exceptional Service. The Exceptional Service Award is presented to Officers Julio Oliva and Officer Danisha Goodman. On October 2nd, 2024, Officers Oliva and Goodman were called upon to assist the Mattson Police Department in locating a psychiatric patient who had escaped from an ambulance. Given the circumstances, Mattson PD requested the use of Orland Park's drone technology to aid in searching for the patient. Officer Oliva piloted the drone, conducting an extensive aerial search, while Officer Goodman served as the visual observer, ensuring the safe and effective execution of the mission. After four hours of diligent searching, their efforts paid off. The at-risk youth was located on the roof of the Home Depot in Mattson. Thanks to their perseverance and expertise, the youth was safely retrieved from the rooftop. Officers Olivia and Goodman demonstrated exceptional dedication, professionalism, and teamwork, utilizing advanced technology to aid in a critical search operation. Their efforts had only ensured the safety of a vulnerable individual, but also bought great credit to themselves and the Orland Park Police Department. In recognition for their outstanding service, Officers Oliva and Goodman are hereby awarded the Exceptional Service Award. Exceptional Service. The Exceptional Service Award is presented to Officers Chris Prattle and Officer Mallory Genosik. On November 22nd, 2024, Officers Prattle and Genosik conducted a routine traffic stop that quickly evolved into a major drug investigation. During the stop, the driver was arrested, and subsequent search of this vehicle led to discovery of 461 grams of cannabis, psychedelic mushrooms, $942 in cash, and four cell phones, indicating possible involvement in drug distribution. Recognizing the potential scope of the operation, Officers Prattle and Genosik conducted a deeper investigation. Through their persistence and investigative skills, they obtained several search warrants, which uncovered additional key evidence linking the suspects to a larger drug trafficking network. Their meticulous work led to formal criminal charges, and the intelligence gathering was turned over to the Drug Enforcement Administration for further investigation. Officers Prattle and Genosik's commitment to thorough investigative work and proactive policing exemplifies the highest standards of law enforcement. Their dedication and determination not only led to a significant drug arrest, but also contributed to a larger effort in combating illegal drug operations. Their efforts bring great credit to themselves and the Orland Park Police Department. In recognition for their outstanding service, Officers Prattle and Genosik are hereby awarded the Exceptional Service Award. Life saving. The Life Saving Medal is awarded for an act performed by officers or employees of the department whose prompt and alert actions result in the saving of a human life. The Life Saving Award is presented to Officer Morgan Hill and Officer Dan Durley. On October 2nd, 2024, Officer Dan Durley and Officer Morgan Hill responded to an assist ambulance for a choking victim who had gone to full cardiac arrest. Officer Durley was the first to arrive on scene and found the male victim unresponsive on the ground. Without hesitation, he initiated the Heimlich maneuver multiple times, but the obstruction remained. Recognizing the urgency of the situation, Officer Durley immediately transitioned to CPR, working tirelessly to sustain the victim's life. Officer Hill arrived shortly thereafter and took over life-saving measures, continuing chest compressions until the Orland Fire Protection District arrived on scene. Fire personnel then took over advanced medical care, ultimately regaining a pulse, before transporting the victim to Northwestern Medical Palace Hospital for further treatment. The quick thinking, decisive action, and teamwork by Officers Durley and Hill were instrumental in saving a life. Their dedication to duty, composure under pressure, and commitment to public safety reflect the highest standards of the Orland Park Police Department. In recognition of their heroic actions, Officer Dan Durley and Morgan Hill are hereby awarded the Life Saving Award. Life Saving Award. The Life Saving Award is presented to Officer Jekyll Skender. On November 22nd, 2024, Officer Jekyll Skender responded to an ambulance assist at a local restaurant for a subject who was choking and unable to breathe. Upon arrival, Officer Skender quickly assessed the situation and observed an elderly female victim in severe distress. Without hesitation, she administered the Heimlich maneuver, applying repeated abdominal thrust until the obstruction was successfully dislodged. As the food was expelled, the victim was able to breathe again. Shortly after, the Orland Fire Protection District arrived on scene and provided additional medical care. After evaluation, the victim was determined to be stable and was able to return home. Officer Skender's swift and decisive action directly saved a life, exemplifying courage, professionalism, and dedication to duty. Her heroism reflects the highest standards of the Orland Park Police Department. In recognition of her life-saving efforts, Officer Jackie Skender is hereby awarded the Life Saving Medal. Educational or Training Achievement. The Educational or Training Achievement Award is presented to officers and employees of the department for an outstanding educational achievement, or to officers or employees who have introduced a new training method or procedure that was adopted by police administration for departmental operations. This fall, Officer Chris Prattle demonstrated outstanding initiative and dedication by developing a comprehensive three-day orientation program for new police recruits. Officer Prattle carefully structured the orientation into time-block sessions, ensuring that all training and administrative requirements were efficiently completed before recruits began their in-car field training. This well-organized approach provides a seamless transition into the training program, allowing recruits to focus entirely on learning and developing their skills in the field. Since its implementation, several recruits have successfully completed the program and has received overwhelming positive feedback. Officer Prattle's commitment to enhance- Officer Prattle's commitment to enhancing training and professional development not only benefits new officers, but also strengthens the Orland Park Police Department as a whole. Officer Chris Prattle is a shining example of leadership, dedication, and innovation in law enforcement training. In recognition of his contributions, he is hereby awarded the Department's Educational Achievement Award. Civilian of the Year Award. The Civilian of the Year Award is presented to civilian employees of the department for highly credible accomplishments bringing public acclaim to themselves, the department, or the police profession as a result of training, devotion to duty, or service to the public. Civilian of the Year Award goes to telecommunicator Al Lavno. For the last 24 years, Al Lavno has been a dedicated and loyal member of the Orland Park Police Department, serving with unwavering commitment and professionalism. Throughout his tenure, Al has been a valuable asset to the department, beginning his career as a detention aide before transitioning to the dispatch center as a telecommunicator. Currently serving as the Assistant Leads Coordinator, Al's steady voice, calm demeanor, and exceptional work ethic make him an outstanding dispatcher. His ability to remain composed under extreme duress ensures critical communication flows seamlessly, contributing to the safety and efficiency of the department. Beyond his technical skill, Al is known for his willingness to assist his fellowship members at every opportunity. His dependability, teamwork, and dedication to the mission of the Orland Park Police Department exemplify the highest standards of service. In recognition for his outstanding contributions and steadfast commitment, Al Lavno is hereby awarded the Civilian Employee of the Year. The Officer of the Year Award is presented to officers of the department for highly credible accomplishment bringing public acclaim to themselves, the department, or to the police profession as a result of training, devotion, or duty, or service to the public. The Officer of the Year Award goes to Investigator Miranda Nickel. Investigator Miranda Nickel has been a dedicated member of the Orland Park Police Department, demonstrating unwavering commitment and excellence in her role. Since joining the Investigations Unit in 2023, she has been a valuable asset, handling 27 cases involving sex offenses against children and overseeing the registration of sex and violent offenders in the Village of Orland Park. Her work has also extended to cases involving the trafficking of children across state lines, showcasing her dedication to protecting the most vulnerable. In February of 2024, Investigator Nickel played a pivotal role in the arrest of a male suspect who sexually abused a minor he met online. Recognizing the complexity of the case which crossed state lines, she enlisted the assistance of the United States Secret Service. Through her diligent investigative work, she collaborated with the Secret Service, or with a Secret Service agent, to draft search warrants and gather a necessary probable cause to issue an arrest warrant. As a result of her efforts, the suspect was apprehended out of state shortly thereafter. Investigator Nickel's commitment to justice, meticulous investigative skills, and dedication to protecting children make her truly deserving of this recognition. In honor of her outstanding service and unwavering dedication, Investigator Miranda Nickel is hereby awarded the Police Officer of the Year Award.
Okay, we'll move on with the meeting at this point. The next item in the agenda is 2025 Playground Renovations Purchase and Installation.
Mr. Chairman.
Trusty Compass.
I move to recommend to the Village Board to approve the waiver of the competitive bid process in lieu of participation in joint purchasing cooperative source well pursuant to contract number 010521-LSI, and authorize the approval and execution of a vendor contract with Landscape Structures Incorporated for the 2025 Playground Renovations Purchase and Installation based on Landscape Structures Incorporated's proposal dated February 5, 2025 for $776,632 plus $15,533 contingency for a total not to exceed contract price of $792,165.
Second.
Okay, Ray, could you give us a presentation?
Mayor, I'll be doing that.
No, you'll be doing it over there, okay? All right, Joel, you do it.
All right, next slide. So just a quick background, the village, we did a second assessment in 2023 that really addressed the assessment of the playgrounds for their condition. So then we created a five-year plan. As you can see, we're at 2025 list, and as you can see, the following three years beyond that of what the next playgrounds would be doing. This is actually, we've got so far over half of the playgrounds been done since 2019, so it's a tremendous effort. We're getting into the ranges of the middle range now of playgrounds, and so that's why you can see the number of playgrounds start to reduce as the years get a little further in 2028 to only two playgrounds later on. Next slide. So for our 2025 playgrounds, we sent out postcards to residents within 300 feet of the playgrounds, like we, every year we do that as a way to let people know. We put it on our website. There was two options. Folks could provide comments, or they could also vote on which option they liked. Then we posted signs at each park, and then the Record Advisory met on February 4 to collect all those comments and also present to them and get their input at the Record Advisory Board, which are citizens of Orland. And there was no attendees for any residents at that board, so then they looked at both options, they looked at the comments from the surveys, and they selected the following options of one, so each of those parks. And no changes were made based on what they saw for each of those parks. And then they also heard about the pavilions, and there was no changes on that. Next slide. And this is just kind of the overview. I talked about the 25 playgrounds. We have four currently in 2025. They are listed, I don't know if you can see it as well, but they are the blue ones, the green ones have done before, sorry. Yeah, thank you for pointing those out. So again, spread throughout the village, so those are listed there. With that, there, I do have some backup slides if you want to see the different options, if that's something you would like to see as well.
Any comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Trusty Compass.
So I know I've walked by Eagle Ridge Three myself, and I did see the signage up there, but can you, Joel, just articulate when, or Ray, when was the signage posted on each of those parks?
I don't have the exact date, but we usually put it out at least two weeks, and after the postcards are also put, before the postcards are put out there, they're displayed so that they can, there's a QR code in the postcards, and that lets them know that they can provide that input using the QR code.
Okay, and I didn't capture all of the gentleman's questions with regards to that particular park. I think I heard that the older playground was being removed, but I was just looking at the plans, I'm still seeing the older playground is still there, so can you just address some of the changes of the questions that were asked?
Joel has a slide for Eagle Ridge. You want to bring up the Eagle Ridge?
Yeah, and while you're pulling that up, I guess what I'll comment on is that, you know, prior to 2017, we were fixing one park every two years, and obviously with 55 playgrounds and 64 parks, that doesn't work, 110 years to get through your parks, and we've done 32 of them since 2020, so we've done a lot, and then four last year, four this year, also four next year, and then three in 2027, then finally at that point, so we're going to have, we'll have gotten into like 40, what, does that make it like 47 of the 55 parks? And then we'll be doing two a year after that, and then we should be on a regular rotation with our parks, so, to get them done, so we're not back in that spot where everything is neglected. So we do that, we also instituted the very things that Joel talked about, which is it goes through the Record Advisory Board, we notify residents nearby, we post it, we do all of that stuff, which never happened before, so all that stuff happens. So the only commentary we've gotten is tonight on Eagle Ridge One, so if you could just go over, or Eagle Ridge Three, if you could just go over the two options.
I did not display both options.
Oh, just the, okay, the chosen option then, okay, that's fine.
And we're not changing the size, but remember, the layout may change because there's safety requirements around each fixture, so the swings have to have a proper safety zone.
Right, and the safety requirements have also changed since they were first built.
Correct, and as well as slides, you have to have a safety zone when you come off the slide, and so forth. So around each fixture is a dashed bubble, and that's the kind of the safety zone, as you can see, so there are some open spaces for kids to move around between the different fixtures. Again, yes, there is a slide, a horizontal slide, or what do they call that, a, yeah.
So it looks like based on this, there's two of them?
There's a zip line on the left side there, and then, and then there's swings, obviously, we also have to bring it up to code for ADA, so accounting for that, so for some swings for kids.
And how many slides do we have there?
We have one, two, three.
Two or three?
Three, three for sure. I can't tell if there's one in the back.
Looks like four.
There's actually, I think, I think in this rendering, there's actually a child slide on the right side there, so there's two smaller slides for the two to five-year-olds, and then on the left side there, there's a total of three, so as the gentleman that was here earlier addressed the concern of the larger slides. Yeah, so there are three larger slides in the new structure there, and we find in recreation and parks that zip lines are very popular, so we always have people asking for more zip lines, they tend to be very popular.
Okay, all right.
So we do have slides, as far as the size and the open space, we're always going to have that open space, we can't make these parks bigger, we don't have the funds to make every park a major park, and we can't put everything for everybody at every park. I know, you know, we have 55 parks, and we have certain ones like that have bocce pits for adults, and they're not at every park, and there are certain ones that are more geared towards adults, where we have 55-plus targeted, I think over by, what is it, Tallgrass? We've got the, we've got the, and we basically have, it's targeted for 55-plus, and then also for toddlers, because the grandparents take the toddlers up there, so it's kind of a mixture, right? So we try and do that all throughout, but we can't do everything at every park, even our big parks, you know, I guess Centennial we probably do, most, we probably hit almost everything at Centennial, and maybe Humphrey, but even Schueller doesn't hit everything, so, and then to the question of tennis courts and basketball courts and things like that, we have a lot of them throughout the village, and probably not adding any more tennis or basketball courts, I wouldn't think, based on their usage throughout town, we'll keep the ones we have. We will add some more pickleball courts going into Dugan Park this year, well, there's 10 pickleball courts and two tennis courts, right? So, and those will be lit, so, but like I said, unfortunately, we can't do everything at every park, there's just, there's too many of them, and we have, what, one park for every 1,000 or 1,100 residents, and nationwide, it's what, one out of every 3,900?
Correct.
Yeah, so, but, yeah, I mean, it seems like, again, that we, you know, based on the input that we've gotten from the residents or lack thereof, and I know we got some tonight, but the slide is there, we're not going to be able to turn it into an adult location that's not designed that way, we have them elsewhere, so, and we're not going to be able to make the space any bigger than it is. In fact, most of our parks are getting smaller, just because for budgetary reasons, we can't keep making them bigger, plus, for the most part, they're not really heavily used, is that correct? Yeah, but, I mean, when I drive by them, they're not heavily used anyways, so I think the chief once said the only one thing about our parks is hardly anybody's ever in them, but on nice days, of course, we get a lot of people in some of them, so.
Any other comments? Call or roll.
Trusty Compass.
Aye.
Trusty Malani.
Aye.
Trusty Healy.
Aye.
Trusty Katsinas.
Aye.
Trusty Reardon.
Aye.
Trusty Radishevsky.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Next item, Village Hall Uninterruptible Power Supply System Project.
Mr. Chairman.
Trusty Malani.
Move to recommend to the Village Board to approve the waiver of the competitive bid process in lieu of participation in joint purchasing cooperative Omnia Partners pursuant to contract number 02-139, and authorize the approval and execution of a vendor contract with Davcom Electric Incorporated for the Village Hall UPS System Project based on Davcom Electric Incorporated's proposal 25-167-03 dated January 26, 2025 for $242,300 plus a $10,000 contingency for a total not to exceed contract price of $252,300.
Second.
And one thing that I would like to see with, you know, these co-op purchases and things, is that, you know, periodically, randomly, we're checking them against bids, right? So we're not just assuming that, I realize that often the co-ops give us the best price, and we look at it, but we do have to refresh that periodically to make sure they haven't, you know, when they don't get competitively bid out, they start to creep up, right? So we got to make sure that we're regularly doing that, so I would like to see some of that in the future.
Mayor, the pricing is also through the RS Means Book, which is the industry standard for estimating, so they can't deviate higher, you know, higher pricing, so that way we can verify that it's right on target with what industry.
Yeah, no, I understand, but I'm just saying that it's just in general, we get a lot of co-ops and sole source, you know, for, you know, Sourcewell and other things, so, and I realize a lot of times we get really good pricing, but I do think that periodically we do need to, you know, we need to bounce those off of the marketplace to see if we still are in fact getting that, I'm not saying every single one. I realize it's a good way to do things because it's faster, it's more efficient, and there's a reason why we do it that way, so hopefully we get better pricing, but we also have to cross-check it once in a while.
Call or roll. Trusty Malani.
Aye.
Trusty Compass.
Aye.
Trusty Healy.
Aye.
Trusty Katsinas.
Aye.
Trusty Reardon.
Aye.
Trusty Radishevsky.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Recreation and Parks Refund Policy Amendment.
Mr. Mayor.
Trusty Radishevsky.
I move to recommend to the Village Board to approve amending the Recreation and Parks Refund Policy Number Four as listed above, eliminating the $5 fee charged to individuals that withdraw from a recreation. that withdraw from a recreation program when documentation from a medical provider is provided, and to assess one $5 fee for a single transaction that includes multiple withdrawals.
And could you just give us a brief summary?
Absolutely.
About the changes here?
So just real quick, we charge a refund fee for all, anybody, anytime someone withdraws from a class, and it's $5 per class. As we administer that, we think that Number Four could use some tweaking, so we can jump to that real quick here. So if we back up one, and you can see here, $5 fee is charged for all programs, for all refunds over $5, and that includes even for medical reasons. So if we jump a couple more slides, these are all our different refund policies. This is in the back of the program guide, and for the most part, we don't have any problems with any of these. If we can jump one more here, and one more. And so we seek to amend Number Four, and that is to eliminate that $5 fee if someone asks for a withdrawal and has a documented medical excuse. We don't need to know what the excuse is, it just has to be documentation from the doctor. The other thing we want to do is just charge one $5 transaction fee. Right now, if a parent comes in and they have three kids, and each child is registered into two programs, each one of those programs is assessed a $5 fee. And so really, in the name of customer service, we don't think either one of those is good policy, and we're seeking the board's approval to change that policy. So it would be, it would eliminate the $5 fee for a medical, documented medical excuse, and it would be one $5 transaction fee anytime there's a withdrawal, it wouldn't be multiple fees.
Any comments? I think those are reasonable changes and good, and good changes. Call or roll?
Trustee Radishewski.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas. Trustee, I'm sorry. Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Okay, I didn't hear you, sorry. Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
143rd Street and John Humphrey Drive Intersection and Bridge Improvements, Phase III Construction Engineering Observation Services Contract Award Recommendation.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Reardon.
I move to recommend the execution of a professional service agreement between the Village of Orland Park and Patrick Engineering, doing business as Rena, for Phase III Construction Engineering Observation Services for the 143rd Street and John Humphrey Drive Intersection and Bridge Improvements for a total not to exceed amount of $849,927, and authorize the Village Manager to execute all related contracts subject to a Village Attorney review.
And, Krishid, is this within the budget that we?
Yes, it is within the budget.
Okay. Any comments?
Call or roll?
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Do we have any non-scheduled citizens and visitors for public comment on items relevant to village business?
Okay, I'm going to make some comments here rather than saving for the board meeting. I'll make them fairly quickly, but we've had, so as I've noted before, this is silly season, we know it is, happens every two years. Over this past weekend, there have been a bunch of rumors, in fact, I saw them again today, regarding the fire district, that the village, and specifically me and the Village Board, are trying to take over the fire district, and we want to take over and merge with the Tinley Park Fire Department. None of this is true. The Orland Park Fire, or the Orland Fire Protection District is a separate taxing body, and the village has zero control or input to it. We do have some intergovernmental agreements, but we have no input over it whatsoever. It's a separate board entirely. These lies are being perpetuated by the usual suspects. I know for a fact that Jerry Gorman called board members of an HOA, spreading this rumor and asking them to send out a statement opposing it. Additionally, Orland Park For All has been posting this on social media. The Gormans, their henchmen, Mike Henry and Orland Park For All also use fake accounts to spread these rumors. Some of these fakes include George Simpson, Sean Morris, Dan H., Frank from Crystal Tree, Jake Simpson, Inform Orland Park, Terry McEdwards, Larry Porter, and Mike Smith. Here on this board, we are completely transparent. With the help of Cindy, Mike, and Bill, all of our meetings are livestreamed, as are all of my mayor's breakfasts and many other events. If any of us had said the things they accuse us of, they would have video to back up their claims, because we're videoed for everything. They want to create division, anger, and strife for their personal gain, bringing their Chicago machine mentality to Orland Park. This is my hometown. I grew up here, when it was less than 6,000 people. My kids grew up here, and I will continue to fight their efforts to divide us and damage Orland Park. This was a great place to be raised, and it was a great place to raise my kids, and I intend to keep it that way, as I know the board does too, so thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Call or roll?
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Reardon.
Aye.
Trustee Radishewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
We're adjourned, starting about 10 minutes, give us 10 or 15 minutes, we'll go out and mingle just a little bit.